All right.
He's better at it than me, Paula. How you doing, sir?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session of the Methacton Board of School Directors on February 21st, 2023. Please rise for the pledge.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members are present this evening. And now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there's a number of presentations. We have Jack Ayers from Fidavia for the Arrowhead Construction Update. Jack, if you want to take your spot at the podium. We also have Mike Kelly from KCBA and John Brave from Watson and Sampson. We just have Mr. Rick with two presentations, one on the transportation contract and the other one, the 2122 fiscal review. And next week, you can see the other presentations as listed for the February 28th meeting. And board members, I believe that some of you don't have paper copies of the agenda. We'll have them down here for you shortly. Okay. It was my mistake. I did the copying today. So I got the ones for out there, but I'd like to put them down here. So my mistake. So with that said, we want to have the Arrowhead Construction Update on the screen. You also, as board members, have a copy of that at your seat. Jack, you can move forward, please.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Jack Ayers, and I represent Fidavia Construction Management and the Methacton School District. Currently at Arrowhead, under site and building exterior, continuing split rail fencing installations, that should say completed. That's done in its entirety. Completed 95% of seating and mulching until we can get to the seeding season here. Completed the stonework, the outdoor learning space. So we're basically ready for the astroturf and the canopy. And backfilling remaining curves and sidewalks with topsoil. That's basically done as well. Under building interior, we're continuing the punch list activities throughout. Completed the codebase at the cafeteria casework. Completed the site walkthrough with four boat manufacturer's representative with a final report to follow. Under mechanical electrical, we're continuing the MEP punch list. That's just about complete. And we completed the last training, which was the theater lighting, and had the owners' representatives there. Under upcoming work, again, we got ahead of ourselves a little bit. I apologize. The faucets are complete throughout the building. We're continuing the commissioning of the building HVAC and water systems. That's just about done. We'll continue the remaining site work at Phase Four. Complete the astroturf and fabric canopy at the outdoor learning space. Complete ornamental fence at outdoor learning space. And again, we completed all the wiring gates around the split rail. So that's done. Other than that, current contract amounts are there. We're at about 3.7% change order work.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Any questions from members of the board to my right? Ms. Winters?
Yeah, actually, not for Jack, but I'm just curious. Being in the building recently for WRA, it's great. It looks good. I believe that part of the idea was to have the community side of the building and the educational side, but we're still using the outside door of the gym, not actually bringing people through the front doors. Is that was the expectation? Or is it because we don't have the gate to protect off the education portion of the building?
That's a good question. Let me look into that, because I don't think that was the original intent.
Yeah, definitely. I don't believe so, but that's how I was being used.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else to my right? Seeing none to my left. Ms. Drummond?
Oh, just a quick question. What were the faucet repairs that were needed?
The faucets were actually coming loose from the sinks themselves. So the manufacturer gave the plumbing contractor additional parts and a sketch to make that work. They were just coming loose from use. So they're now all repaired as of last Friday.
Any other questions? Ms. Perdue?
Just a quick question. I guess what timeline are we looking at now for completion of all work altogether?
The final completion date is April 15th, as per the contract. So basically, with a couple site departances to do, fire lane paving and some gate and a gate there, we're basically looking for seeding seizing at this point and getting some germination, and that should complete the job.
Is there a plan, I guess, additional walkthrough for the board?
There's going to be a number of activities within terms of inspecting and making sure that all the punch list items are reviewed, not only through the principal, but through the administration, but certainly the board. We can take another tour through. But there is a, I believe it is in April, we have a date set for a grand opening slash building dedication. But if the board would care to take another trip through the building, you know, before that, we can certainly make those arrangements. If you're interested in doing that, just make a request to the president, and I'll be glad to make that arrangement.
Okay. No, just because I know the last time, I know I was there personally, there were a few items that we noted, and I just wanted to see if we'll have an opportunity to take a look before the work is completed. But in reference to the punch list items, so that will be worked through with the building principal?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
With actually the teachers and the building principal. And if you cared to, we can certainly provide the final punch list document to the members of the board. And then it may be, you know, of value at that point, because you may not know what you're looking for when you go through that, not being in the building on a day-to-day basis. Like, you wouldn't know the faucets were an issue. You wouldn't think the faucets would be an issue, but they were. Any other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Ayers, thank you so much for your time this evening and your work on this project.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Methacton High School Pool Assessment. If you recall back in, right around November of 2022, we presented a recommendation to have the pool reviewed. We not only asked for an aquatics expert to be involved in the evaluation, but also to have the site mechanics and structural integrity of the pool looked at as well. So this evening, we have Mike Kelly from KCBA and John Brave from Watson and Sampson. And we have the presentation. You should have the copy of the presentation in front of you. You also have a copy of the report in front of you. And John and Mike, if you want to take the podium, we'll be glad to have you present right now.
Thank you, everyone. Good to see you again. As Dr. Zerbi had said, we were asked to take a look at the pool at the high school. John and I are going to kind of split this presentation. We're kind of taking things, everything, out of the water, and John's in charge of everything in the water. Obviously, the pool is inside the shell called the auditorium. That's the roofs, the walls, the locker rooms and things like that around the pool, as well as some of the infrastructure that's under the pool. We'll talk about that a little bit tonight. So from our standpoint, one of the things that we had looked at was the need and refurbishment of that existing space. Again, John's going to talk a little bit about the filtration systems and things like that around the pool. Some ADA compliance issues. That's handicap accessibility issues. Locker rooms, showers, toilet stalls and things like that in the locker rooms. Obviously, you have all those bleachers that are up top. Those are things that are not ADA compliant. And then I'll turn that over to John to talk a little bit about the pool. And then when we get back underneath the pool, I'll come back and we'll talk a little bit about some infrastructure concerns.
I'm going to cheat a little bit and talk a little bit about what's on the pool deck. And that's part of the problem. There's a lot of stuff on the pool deck. Excuse me. If you look at the image behind you, you're going to see boats and lane lines and swimboards and timing systems and all kinds of accoutrement that are part of any contemporary aquatic program. And yet, you've got a very narrow deck. So the space is very crowded. There's woefully inadequate storage. And we think that that certainly is unsightly. In some cases, I can see that it could even become dangerous. Mike has already addressed water that often stands on the deck. I think one of the things, Mike, you want me to talk about the ceiling? You want to handle. If you look up at the top of the image, you'll see that there's a suspended ceiling. Every time I go into an auditorium and I see a suspended ceiling, it's an immediate red flag, because there have been many instances across the country where suspended ceilings fall down unexpectedly. And the reason that happens is because every swimming pool like this is associated with corrosive offgassing from the water. It's the chlorine smell that everybody is familiar with. That's actually very, very acidic. It will attack stainless steel, even the stainless steel wires that typically hold up the ceiling grid. And there's really not any good way to know what kind of condition the whole grid is. It may be fine someplace you check. It may not be fine someplace else. But the collapses are, as I say, they're unexpected, and they're serious enough so that it's always a good idea to replace the ceiling. In this instance, that has a lot of ramifications, because all of the ductwork and the lighting, and of course, the inherent acoustical control for the space is all part of that ceiling grid. So if you pull the ceiling grid out, you have to finish whatever is above it to make it look pretty. You have to replace all the lighting. You have to replace all the ductwork. And you have to add the different type of acoustical control. So there's a lot going on here before we even start to talk about the pool that affects the comfort and function just of the basic space. About 16 or 17 years ago, there was a major renovation to the pool. At that time, the original pool structure was covered with what I'll call a false front, sort of a membrane or liner system within the original pool shell, presumably because the shell was leaking. Also, you can see a curb all the way around the pool where one must step up onto the edge of the pool in order to get in. My guess is that they did that because the pool wasn't really quite deep enough in many locations. And so you had this, the system, which was manufactured in Italy. It's a package system that is unique to that particular manufacturer. It consists of a stainless steel gutter. You can see the grating over the gutter channel all the way around. Underneath that are some interlocking stainless steel panels with plastic coating on the front. Panels are about that wide. They lock into each other all the way around the pool. They're about two different heights. And then from the bottom of those panels, there's a PVC membrane that starts and fills in the lower part of the wall and onto the floor. That's all heat welded together, kind of like some roofing systems. So you've got these three basic components to the membrane system inside the pool. I was under the pool deck. I've walked around the tunnel that's around the pool twice, as I've mentioned to your building committee. It's among the more gruesome spaces I've seen as I've wandered through various old pools. There are a lot of leaks pretty much all the way around the pool. It really is not possible to know exactly where the pool is leaking. My best guess is that it's leaking in many locations. I think that it's probably leaking at a lot of the seams between the interlocking panels, maybe at the interface between the gutter and the panels. But there really isn't any way to know. We did some estimating on how to fix it. And of course, as engineers, we're not going to suggest a method that we can't rely on. So our budget numbers really have us replacing that entire membrane system with a new method of finishing the inside of the pool and making it watertight, a different kind of a gutter system, and other measures all to enhance the appearance and function of the pool. If I were you, I don't know that that's a very good investment for this space. I mean, you can spend millions of dollars just in the auditorium fixing up the pool, replacing the filtration system with something that's a little bit easier to use and gives you better water quality. But at the end of the day, I think that the, from a programmatic perspective, for a six-lane pool with a single diving board, probably will work for a while. It's not anything like the newer pools that you see in Montgomery County. There are some really beautiful facilities. As long as you have it, it's always going to be crowded. And it's always going to look like the dated facility that it is. But I think you could limp along for a while. I haven't seen anything around the pool that alarms me to the point where you're going to have an immediate failure. It's just going to be an ongoing deteriorating nuisance of one kind or another. I think that you could probably improve on the current conditions by hiring a specialty contractor to come in and reseal all those joints. You won't ever know if you got them all until you fill it back up again. You might get most and squeeze a few more years out of the facility. But I don't think that you're going to have a very permanent solution to the pool issues unless you spend a lot of money on it. And we've kind of outlined that in our report. I think we've also given you some sense of what a new pool would cost. This particular auditorium is landlocked. You can't really get at it from the outside. And so making major improvements to this space is also compromised just by the difficulties of getting at it. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Thanks. To kind of round out our portion of that study, again, with the auditorium and the shell, the HVAC system, the unit that sits on the roof and just kind of provides heating and cooling into that space, has been upgraded somewhat recently. So that unit is fine. As John had said, the ductwork and the location of that space up in the ceiling is something that may need to be rethought if the ceiling comes out. But one thing that isn't included in that space is basically kind of the same sort of unit that you might have in the gym or an auditorium or a place like that. But dealing with the humidity, the corrosiveness, as John had mentioned as well, that unit is just kind of throwing cold air or throwing hot air into a space. What it's not doing as well, there are systems now with pool filtration systems that tries to pull the air across the pool. You think about conditioning a space. Well, the athletes in a basketball court are running up and down. They're six feet tall. When you're in a pool, you're really breathing, the athletes are breathing, you know, the six inches of air right above the water. And at some point, that can be some of the more corrosive air in the pool. That's where the water is offgassing. So in modern pool designs regarding HVAC issues, you try to have return air along the side of the pool, kind of pulling new air across the pool and recycling that air down through some filters. So while the HVAC unit of the space may be fine, the science behind how heating and cooling and providing better indoor air quality into that space is something that is a bit lacking, as found in the report. As John had mentioned in some of these images here, you can kind of see the pool deck. You know, as water comes in, some of the concrete is corroded. Some of the rebar is now exposed and starting to rust. As John had said, again, we don't know that there's anything imminent, but it's getting worse. And it's something that should be looked at, certainly for the long-term use of this space, whether this space is going to be reused as something else or as the pool. This is something to take a look at. And I think John said it good as well. You know, the replacement and upgrades of this space, when we're all done, is going to be a cleaner, nicer version of what you already have. Six lanes, smaller diving area, smaller pool deck. We'd have to provide a lift to get up to the spaces above there. You can see the spectator seating on the upper level. Again, very limited amount of deck space between the walls and the water. And then there's a whole bunch of furniture and chairs and desks and things like that. And you can see a little exercise bike and things like that that's being thrown on the deck. That just makes that space even smaller and more cramped. So any questions regarding the report or anything that was presented tonight?
And again, members of the board, before we take the questions, there will be additional information as part of the Bureau Veritas Facility Assessment Report that will also come. So this is just one report that you'll have before you. There is a second one that will eventually be provided to you. Questions to people from my left. Ms. Perdue?
Sorry. Thank you for the report. I just had, so my first question was in reference to the ADA space. I think you mentioned it wasn't compliant. And I guess my question was in reference to, and maybe this is in the other report, something about it needs to be operable without additional assistance. Can you, yeah, can you elaborate on that?
Yes. The ADA regulations stipulate that there has to be a fixed accommodation for handicapped individuals to get in and out of the pool on their own without assistance. And you don't really have that. You have what's sort of euphemistically called a portable handicap lift, which is a huge device that has wheels on it. Each time it's removed, you have to bring it back in, and technically, it has to be bolted back in place. It's really very much different than a lift that is permanently mounted next to the pool. Another problem with the portable one that you have is that you've got to have a temporary garden hose connection every time you want to use it. And that stretches across the pool and becomes a tripping hazard. So a modern-day lift for a swimming pool is So a modern day lift for a swimming pool is actually electric typically, has a battery or batteries that can be taken off and recharged, and a little hydraulic pump that's part of these that lifts the, the arm that has the seat that people sit in is, is battery powered. So it's, it's rather compact, works quite well, and you need one of those in order to become truly compliant with ADA. The other issue regarding ADA, of course, is access to the spectator seating. There's no way to get up there, and, and that's a problem.
Thank you. And I did have one more, and I want to be mindful that others have questions also. The suspended ceiling that you talked about, and I think you mentioned that, is really hard to, I guess, I guess my question for you is how can that be assessed? Like, how, is there a way to get it? Because it seemed like what you were saying is we may be at the point where anything can happen from that, right?
I, I, I don't mean to be a fear monger.
Okay.
But, but yeah, that's essentially, that's it. It's, it's really hard to even get at it. There are some places in the auditorium, like up in the spectator seating and over the filter room, where you've got some, just part of the, the architecture of the space that would allow you to start from a higher elevation to put a ladder or something up there to try and, and lift some of those panels and, and maybe get some sort of a, an understanding of what kind of condition the wires are in. But the number of locations around the perimeter where you might have that kind of access, I'm not sure would be truly representative of the general condition across the whole grid. So again, I don't want to be an alarmist, but I, I have a responsibility, I think, knowing what I know, to, to share my concern with you in that regard.
Okay. Thank you. And then one more in reference to the renovation that you mentioned that was done over 16 years ago, and I'm just wondering, just because you mentioned some of the things that were done, it may have been done due to some leak issues. I'm just wondering if we have any notes on that renovation, and I don't know if you know.
I, I'm not aware that we do. I'm not saying we don't. It's not something that we, we looked into at this point in time.
We've asked, and there, there doesn't seem to be any, any historical record of the, the logic behind the renovation. So I think all we can do is, is infer based on the design what some of the reasons were. And I'm sure that some of the reasons were good. The particular system that was used, not something I would do, but it is what it is, and it's lasted this long, but I think it, it might be tweakable to a limited degree.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Reese?
I just have one super quick question. In the paperwork we have, there's, on the back page of this one, it says option two. And where's option one?
It should be in front of option two.
Okay. That's fine.
Which one is option, is option two, the, the renovation? So, okay, there should be an option.
Okay. So whenever?
No, that's, that's, yes. We owe you option one. So that was the two to kind of weigh and try to understand the, the cost of renovating, upgrading as much as you can within that space. So we need to, we owe you that page. Sorry about that. I don't know why that's not in there.
I meant whenever it gets to us, we can add it. That's what I meant. I know we need it. Thank you.
And I just want to call out, there's three pages here missing, so there may not, we may not have the full document. There's three pages that's just blank, like, as you see here.
So some of those are just, those being sections going from one section to another. In the, in the, in the printed report, those brown or, or gray pages are like chapter headings, like, it's like a thing that's in a report that you would go to the next section.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're aware that we may not have everything that we should have.
There's one page missing. We'll go back and make sure there's not more than one page missing. Sorry about that.
Yeah, just to make, just to make some clarifying points, we're providing the presentation tonight. We provide the document for the board and the administration to review. I haven't had a chance to get through the entire document myself. So similar to what we normally do with reports like this, is we get the presentation, we get the documents, we then have, give us a time to review them, and then after we believe that it's complete, then we take a board action to accept the document. And we would do the same with the, the documents for the Bureau Veritas Facility Wide, District Facility Wide Assessment. Ms. Graff?
Yeah. So I have a question to follow up on Samira's comment about the ceiling.
Yes.
I don't see any observations about the ceiling in the report. Will it be in the report or added to the report?
I don't know that there's anybody who, who performs that type of service.
I guess what I'm asking is, in your presentation, you talked about the ceiling, but I don't see it in the report. So I'm not sure why we're talking about it in the presentation if it's not in the report, unless maybe I'm missing it in the report. So that's my question. Okay.
If it's not in the report, it, it, it should be added to make the report properly complete.
Yeah, so can we just make sure that we get it in there for documentation? And then the second question I had was regarding the pool deck clearance, because this is something I feel like is a, is a significant issue for us. There's a statement in this report that says that there's a minimum required four-foot clearance. What is that requirement from? Is that code requirement? Is that?
Yes, it's a code, excuse me, yes, it's a code requirement.
Okay. And then regarding the HVAC unit, so you talked about the fact that the HVAC unit does not have a return, so it's not exhausting the room?
No. Shall I?
And, and so a follow up to that would be like, is it a dedicated HVAC unit?
It is a dedicated HVAC unit, and, and it, as, as it really must be for any auditorium. What Mike was explaining is, is that an HVAC system for a swimming pool really is supposed to do two things. It's supposed to turn all of the air in the space over every, between four and six times per hour, and in that process, it's supposed to add heat or cold, it's supposed to take all the water out of the air, and it's supposed to keep the air circulating throughout the space. The second thing an HVAC system does is to exhaust a certain portion of the air in the room and replace it with fresh air. So two different functions. Oftentimes, an HVAC system will be designed to do both of those. It'll have what's called a damper, which is just like a, a porthole that will allow air that's passing through the system to go out, and then it'll have another one that will have a fan or something to draw it in. And, and that's how the air replacement portion is accomplished. The problem with that is that even if the two parts of that system are compliant with code, you aren't really pulling the most polluted air in the space and exhausting it. And what, what Mike was alluding to is that these days, when we design a, a major renovation or a new pool, we incorporate a technology where the air that gets exhausted, just as part of the normal air exchange, is drawn from just over the water surface, very down low, so that we continually wash and clean the air that the people in the water are breathing. And that's where we focus our exhaust. And then the rest of the equipment that I've described goes ahead and replaces the air that we're exhausting with fresh air. And that way, we, we have a much better method of keeping the air in the auditorium clean and healthy. Does that answer your question?
It does. So to follow up to that, does the current HVAC system accomplish the four to six turnovers per hour that are in the design?
We, we have no reason to believe it doesn't. It's, it's current, that's been a code regulation.
So it's not the top of the line HVAC design that would be installed today if we were to build a pool, but it does accomplish what's required?
The, the, the existing component could be part of, of a renovation. The, there are some other nuances to the technology we've been describing that I don't want to bore you with unless you really want me to explain it. But it, it, it isn't necessarily a throwaway. It may be usable and just augmented in order to accomplish the improvements that we typically see these days in an auditorium. I, I'm not intimately familiar with the equipment that's there, so I can't give you a more specific answer than that.
No, that's, that's great. That's helpful. And then the other thing I saw in the report is that the chlorine feed system does not have secondary containment.
Yes, which is basically a different chlorine solution tank. That's, that's not a major, major issue. I, I'm not sure that, that the method of chlorinating the water is most appropriate. You know, we're, we're very careful about where we bring liquid chlorine and where the hoses have to go in order to fill chlorine solution tanks, and, and I think we, we would have a quarrel with how you're doing it, but that isn't the most, that, that's a misdemeanor. It's not a felony in terms of all of the things that we saw around the pool.
So my question is, is there a code requirement to have that secondary containment?
There, there is above a certain size. I'm not even sure that that, that, that breaks the, the threshold on that. It's just a, a, it's just something that we noted during our inspection.
Well, and I assume it's also a good safety practice, right?
Yes, it is.
I mean, to keep our students and people in the building safe.
Well, yes. I'm particularly concerned with facilities personnel, actually, in this regard. Students really aren't in that room, but facilities people need to be safe too.
Right. And so that brings me to my other question related to facilities personnel. One of the comments in your report is to install a ventilation system for the crawl space or tunnel area. Is that ventilation system something that's required, or is it a good practice?
It's, it's a good practice, and really, there isn't one now. I think they, they basically broke through the deck and, and connected the interstitial space around the pool with an auditorium space above. And, you know, that's pretty lame. It's, it's not, it's not really a legitimate air exchange. If you don't exchange the air down underneath in that interstitial space around the pool, obviously, it's, there's water down there, it's going to get moldy and damp, and will just exacerbate the deterioration that we've seen.
Great. Great. Thank you very much. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. Ms. Kangaro?
So I guess my question comes in the tunnels, right? So we're in the tunnels. This is the most concern for me. And so when you have this three foot wide tunnel, it says several locations are definitely having deterioration. And so it could be from the pool floor, but it also could be, be from the floor itself of the deck, in several locations. So does that mean to me north, south, east, west?
What, what's happening is that water does not flow off the deck readily into the deck drains. It ponds, and that's just a term that means you've got little bird baths or puddles around the perimeter of the pool. In, in some locations, that ponding allows the water to actually penetrate through the tile on the deck and the grout, mostly the grout, underneath the tile through the concrete, because believe it or not, while concrete is hard, it is porous, and water will migrate through concrete. And over the decades of the pool's existence, that's what's been happening. Water has been migrating through the concrete, it's been attacking the steel reinforcing bars in the concrete and, and deteriorating them, and to the point where it's deteriorated them enough so that the corrosion of the bars has expanded and popped the concrete off the bottom of the slabs. You have to remember that the pool deck is actually a structural slab that forms the roof of the tunnel all the way around the pool. And so as, as the steel has deteriorated, it's, it's what we call spalled the concrete. And the steel has deteriorated in many locations to the point where it might as well not even exist. All you've got to, to give the concrete the strength to span over the, the tunnel is just the inherent ability of concrete to adhere to itself, just, just, just the native adhesion of the concrete. Luckily, it's not a very wide span, so we're not really asking too much of, of the concrete to make the span, but it's certainly not a condition that, that we would want to allow if we were going to bring the space up to snuff.
So the question I have too is just that when we say there's a leaks in the pool, right, so that we've got gallons being lost daily?
Yes.
And they say, well, why can't you just take all the water out and do some sealing? You'd have to seal the entire pool because you really can't, through all this water, you, there's not just one area, there's not just a left side or right side.
Right. We're really talking about two different things. The water on the deck is one thing, and the water leaking out of the pool is another thing. Two different causes and two different solutions. The water that's leaking out of the pool is leaking in various ways through this, this false front that's been erected in front of the original pool shell. And we, I, I believe that, that a concerted effort by a qualified pool contractor to try and seal that up as best as they can, which is just a shotgun approach of resealing all of the joints that they can find. I think that's going to improve the condition, but I imagine it will recur and maybe sooner than later. Does that, I'm sorry, does that explain?
Thank you. I just feel like it, I'm picturing, it's only two, three pictures here, but in my mind, I'm thinking it's the whole tunnel area that's been corroded by both situations, the floor and the sides.
It isn't the whole tunnel, and the leakage of the pool is not related to the deterioration of the deck. That's another matter.
Okay.
And it's, it's one that I've actually seen fairly often. It's surprising how often pool water migrates through pool decks when there's a tunnel underneath.
And the only thing I would say to you, Dr. Serbys, I am interested in the ceiling only because when was the last time we've ever looked at the ceiling? So whether it's with this company or when we see the facilities report, just someone to be able to see if there is any possible corrosion, just, I mean, if there is something that we can look into in the property committee.
We'll, we'll definitely look into it. I think the one thing that'll have to be done, if we were actually doing a full inspection of, of that area, would be to join the pool and be able to then set lifts in to get up, and that would, it, so it might be a little bit more of a, of a, of a larger conversation about what we need to do so that we can either, you know, maintain the, the existing facilities until we come up with a, a better long-term solution. Any other questions? Ms. Drummond?
Thank you. I just have really kind of a larger question about the 2005 renovation, as you understand it. Because I, I understand that was originally constructed, the building with the pool in 1961. In 2005, I know that would have been after the Americans with the disability acts, is that correct? And I'm just trying to understand why none of these ADA compliance issues were addressed in 2005. Did the scope of the project not go far enough? And then secondarily to that, why, I mean, someone must have come in, assessed the pool, assessed the water, built this shell around the pool, but yet not looked at the decks and what was leaking under there? I'm just, I'm trying to understand why this was done the way it was.
You'll appreciate that we would have to speculate just as you would, because we weren't involved in that. But I can tell you that the, the lift associated with the pool is another one of those misdemeanors. It might be a $5,000 investment in order to correct that. It's not, while it's not nothing, it's, in the overall scheme of things, it's not that big a deal. It's, it's readily correctable. The access to the spectator seating, on the other hand, is much different. That would, that's a much more difficult problem to solve, and I, I, well outside of my lane to try and explain how that might be done. Mike can probably handle that better than I can.
I, yeah, I guess my question is just, I, I know sometimes what's explained to us is that if the scope of the project goes beyond a certain amount, then you have to fall, you have to do all the compliance upgrades and everything, and maybe this didn't, but it just seemed like to then go another, you know, so many years without this compliance, you know, and it was so many, and it was what, 13 years after the ADA that this happened, and now it's another, what, 13 years after? I mean, it just seems like a really long time that we're now looking and have this written in front of us with this compliance issue.
With respect, with respect to the pool lift, there may actually have been a pool lift associated with the renovation that wore out and was replaced by the apparatus that I described a little while ago. So I don't know that there wasn't a, a lift that was part of that. Back in 2005, you didn't have very good options in terms of lifts. They, they were typically all powered by water, again, with a garden hose, and, and they, they didn't hold up all that well. So it wouldn't surprise me to learn that there was a lift and that it was thrown away and replaced by something else that at least someone at the time thought was appropriate.
Yeah, again, as, as John had said, it'd be speculating to know why somebody did some, what they did in 2005. ADA compliance since 1992, there's no grandfather. You, it was the day they signed it. There were a lot of buildings that were not compliant. Now, obviously they've given some time. But as you mentioned, it's been 33 years now or 31 years. So if you look at, uh, the seating, uh, the spectator seating, there is no way to get up there. Maybe there was, uh, an argument, hey, we're going to have one little area on the deck where someone in a wheelchair can sit there. That's not per code, but in a lot of things, there's interpretations. Are, are you providing a space? Okay, that, that person can be there. It's not really the letter of the rule, but that may have been what was allowed at the time by the code inspector that reviewed that. Same thing with the lift. You know, we have a lift. It's not best practices. It's not, you know, kind of ADA friendly, but it's there. We can get someone in there if we had to. Um, so those are the, the, the issues there when it comes to compliance. There's gray areas of sort of, uh, and that's kind of where you're living with the existing conditions.
Thank you. Any questions to members to my right? Uh, Mr. Ruckstuhl?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, just a quick question regarding the timeline for a project, um, like this. I'm just wondering what the estimated timeline would be to, you know, tech, attack this and with the ceiling and the tunnel, possibly HVAC, like is this something that, I mean, you, can you give us a ballpark timeline on how long that would take? And would there, this be something that would be disruptive to our swim seasons or could it be done in a way that did not impact, uh, the varsity sports?
Yeah, certainly a, a major renovation like that is more than just the summer. So in other schools that this has occurred, there's, you, you try to end the season and have as much time to, to do something like that as possible before the next season. Like any high school athlete, seasons are never over. They're in there over the summer. They're in there, you know, if it's a, if it's a spring sport, I'm still training in the fall. So as an estimate, I mean, certainly six to eight, maybe nine months to, to do something like that. So you set the, the start date, you know, June 1st? Well, okay, but now we're not done until, you know, going into the following year. So, um, our advice would be any type of, uh, renovation of that space would be, you would lose an academic year. Um, and certainly any training, uh, any, um, community events and things like that, that would be occurring as well would need to, uh, be housed elsewhere. Because of the extent of what you're looking at, we, we'd have to remove the entire decking around the outside. You're, you're essentially removing all of the system that John had described of, of all those filters and all of that. Uh, 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 plastic coatings and things like that that are in the pool. All of that would be removed. Ceilings would be removed. There's a lot of demo and then bringing all of those things back. So, could it be six months? Maybe, but it's not, it's not summer. It's not 10 weeks. Uh, and we'd have to work with you on where's the, it's like renovating an auditorium. You know, right when the, the school play is over, we'll go and we'll just have to do the winter concert someplace else. Uh, work with you on, on a schedule that, that, uh, is the least disruptive, but there will be some disruption.
Great. And could, is it possible, cause I know you're going to add the option one, um, an update to the report. Is it possible to add an estimated timeline?
Sure.
To those different options, just so we can say, and I understand, you know, there's a lot of variables and it could be a, a wide range. But just so on that one document, we can kind of see, you know, just what we're, what we're talking about there.
Yeah, the, the, that's a good idea. So we can do that as a timeline for renovation. Timeline for new depends on what and where. I mean, if you look at Whistahickon High School, it did a pool a couple of years ago that was on the side of the high school. Everybody just kept doing what they were doing. They built this pool. When it was done, everybody moved in. So anything that's new is kind of a much easier timeframe to look at. You know, call that nine months to a year to build a, a structure like that. But there is no disruption in that sense because it's, it's sitting wherever it's going to sit. And that pool is, uh, is used, uh, while the new construction occurs. But we can provide that as, uh, as, as another comparison.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruckstuhl. Anyone else to my, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, just to summarize, we, we do not know where the leak is, right? At this point, and you recommend having a third party come in and try to identify the leak?
No, I think it's a waste of time to try and identify the leak. I think you should have a third party come in and, uh, and do a best effort to seal all the joints in the pool and cross your fingers that you get enough of them to make it worth, uh, make it worthwhile. I think that the, the, the system that's there, uh, has some inherent issues. Uh, that I, I think that the seams just work loose periodically. So I think that, um, if you seal them up and, and, uh, do, if someone does the best they can to address everything they can see, then, uh, I think you'll gain something. Uh, it's difficult to know what. That's why when we, uh, when we gave you an option for renovation, it wasn't fixing what's there. It was replacing what's there because that's the only way we can rely on our efforts to solve your problem.
Okay, thank you. So going back to option one, so I'm sure, Mike, you have some estimate. Option one was not new construction. It was repair, I assume.
Option one was a little over $4 million all in and it does give that breakdown of all of those things, which is includes replacing the deck, uh, a, a full new membrane. Typically the membranes, uh, I know that we've been recommending in other areas are not the system that you have now with all those seams. So there's ways to, um, make sure that these things don't happen again in the future. As you had said, you know, can we fix the leak? It's not the leak. It's many leaks everywhere. Um, you know, we, we noticed as we walked down where there's, um, the new filtration system. As John had said, that thing that sits up on the side and then all the gutter system, when they, when they installed that 15 years ago, they drilled holes through the concrete to get there. So you have a tub and you drill the hole in it. Well, guess where one of the leaks are? Where they drilled the hole. So that's where some of the water's coming out, uh, is there. But then there's water kind of migrating in, in many other places as well from the body of the pool. And then there's the deck issue because the deck is not sloping back to the pool. You, you jump in, you know, you do a big, uh, belly flop and water goes onto the sides. Well, that water is just sitting there and then that's migrating through the deck. And so that's again, problem two is all the issues with the, the water that's sitting on the deck and ultimately corroding, the makeup of that walkway.
So generally though, option one, I know we'll, we'll get it when, um, whenever the, the page can be printed out. But you're, are you resolving the deck, the ceiling and all the things that you've referenced today for four mil, estimated $4 million?
Yeah. And that includes as well the, the locker rooms. Again, when we talked about ADA compliance, um, you know, going into the locker rooms and, um, providing some locker areas that would be ADA compliant, showers, toilet stalls, sinks and things like that. It rebuilds the deck. The deck is always four feet wide. Um, you know, it rebuilds the pool. The pool is always six lanes wide. Um, so it's, it's bringing back what you have, uh, but fixing the things about leaks, um, uh, deck space, taking the ceiling out. We can show you some examples there. Wilson area and, and Easton, uh, is a prime example. Uh, you know, that ceiling came out. It was a mess up there. You know, they, uh, polished everything up, painted everything. We hung a bunch of acoustical panels and it looks nice. It's the same shell that they had before. It's the same pool they had.
Yeah. Understand there, there might be, uh, additional benefits for replacing, but as, as is to get a functioning high school gymnasium with the problems that you guys have identified, independent of additional storage or whatever, you're saying at approximately $4 million?
Yeah, it was a little over that.
Okay, it's, it's fine. Uh, so for the audience, the option two that's listed for the new construction is $10.3 million and it's 60% larger space. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, again, if you think about, um, building a new building, it's site work. It's a roof that you need. It's the steel. It's the brick. It's the shell of everything. Building that back, that's an eight lane pool with much wider decks with new locker rooms and things like that. So as you would expect, a new facility would have all of those amenities and just be a much larger space. We're sitting here saying that the existing space is a bit too small. Again, six lanes is fine, but most pools now are eight, just to provide for more competition. So yeah, I mean, you're, you're looking at a, uh, it's not apples to apples.
Understood. Thank you.
Very different facility.
Any other questions for members to my right? Seeing no other questions. Anyone else to the left? Ms. Perdue?
Just a quick one. What is the lifespan of a, a pool of that size, the ceiling? The ceiling of the pool?
The existing one or a new one?
In general, the lifespan.
Well, again, I, to, to John's point, the ceiling, that type of ceiling is what you have in all your classrooms. So that ceiling can last forever because in a classroom it's fine. The difference here is in the air, you've got corrosive materials. You've got moisture and things like that. That's what's starting to corrode or could be corroding the supports that hold that ceiling. Above the ceiling, it's like metal twist ties that just goes up to the seal, to the, um, to the structure and then ties to the grid. Those, uh, you know, kind of the tic tac toe grid and then the tile itself, the white thing sits inside the grid. But those twist ties are what can go up and they're metal. Uh, in a classroom, there's not humidity and in a pool there can be.
So not asking for the classroom, but in the pool area, there's.
Right. No, exactly. So that's what I'm saying is, is the, the, that type of system can last forever. But in a pool environment, uh, it can corrode quickly, uh, or it can corrode never. That's one of the concerns. If we were going to renovate that space, we would certainly take out the ceiling for all of the concerns that, that John was expressing. Is it imminent? Is it going to happen tomorrow? No one knows. That's why we're, we're kind of flagging that as a concern, maybe to take a look at, but certainly to keep in mind if we renovated that space.
I think at the beginning of the conversation, there was some information about this, these ceilings have collapsed in other schools. And can you tell us what the lifespan of those collapsed ceilings were? Is it five years? Is it 25 years?
It, it sounds like we're trying to be evasive, but, but the, the simple answer is we don't, we don't know what the lifespan. And the reason we don't know is because, um, it, it varies so much. I think it depends on how the air moves through a space, how, what the propensity is for the air to be trapped above the grid. Uh, different things like that vary from one project to another. So I don't know that, that anybody could give you any kind of a definitive answer on how long the grid should last. It was a bad idea to begin with, uh, in fairness to the folks who did it. They, they probably didn't understand that. But, uh, we know it now. So we're sharing.
Any other questions? John and Mike, thank you very much for your, your time this evening. And like I said earlier, folks, um, we, we have two presentations this month, uh, on the high school facility. And the first one we saw this evening was the pool study that was commissioned in November, following several concerns with leaking and other matters. And next week we'll also have a presentation by Bureau Veritas on the high school, which is part of a more comprehensive study for all of the best buildings in the district. And these reports will require careful review of the, by the board and the administration before accepting them as final and complete. It is my hope that we can begin reviewing the information, uh, over the next several months with a target of April, uh, 2023 for adoption of both of the, uh, reports. Similarly, um, and this is similar to the, the same practice as we did back in 2016 with, with the last facilities assessment study. So with that said, uh, next on the agenda this evening, we have the 2021, 2022 fiscal review. Uh, this includes, uh, our, our typical, uh, audit, uh, to actual, uh, uh, reports and, and budget report, uh, report that we, that we generally do in November, but because of the audit coming late in the school year, we provided it to the finance committee in February. And then we're going to present it here this evening. Uh, you should have a copy of that at your seat. And, uh, Mr. Bicker will be presenting the information on the screen. Mr. Bicker?
And Dr. Zerby. Okay. So the first piece you want to tie into is where are the big variance between the budget and the actual audited revenue come in? We start with a budget of $114.4 million. It's balanced between expenditures and revenues. We end up with $127.5 million of revenue and $127.9 million of expenditures after the audits completed. The first area that we want to point out is the Shenandoah tax settlement. That accounts for $7.2 million of the variance on both sides. $793,000 is current year taxes. $6.4 million was treated as prior year taxes. Those were the funds held in escrow. The next area that we have is the grants and donations. The first piece of that being the grants and donations from the Methacne Education Fund, a foundation and the areas that we're getting for the schools, getting donations made, that's an accounting change. So previously we would put a hundred dollars into a expenditure account, making it negative. Then we spend a hundred dollars. Recommendation from this set of orders is to break it out between revenue and expenditures. That's why you see the balanced amount. We spend what we get and that's how that actually works out. Then you have the safety grant gear, SRS two and SRS three. And the, uh, total for that is about $1.1 million. Again, balanced on both sides. So it's accounted for on both the revenue and the expenditures. The next one is an accounting change that was pertinent to just the 21, 22 year and starts there. And then will be carried forward. That's under GASB 87, uh, with regards to leases. What that says is even though we're not actually acquiring the equipment, we have to account for the purchase of the equipment and then the reimbursement of the equipment. Uh, and that's put on through the lease. That totals about $1.6 million. Again, it's a wash between revenue and expenditures. The last item is an item that comes after we're actually done our fiscal year, positives and negatives to figure out where we end up. And that's where we go over the unassigned fund balance over 7%. So the board has a policy that says if we're over 7%, we have to either commit or move those funds. In this case, we transferred those funds to our capital project fund totaled $4.1 million. When we back out all those numbers, our actual revenue without the one-time events that are occurring and without the grants and without the accounting changes, we end up with $117.5 million roughly of revenue. And we end up with about $113.8, $113.9 million of expenditures, which gives us a $3.6 million surplus. Now, how do we come to that? So we start off the year with a hundred, eight, I'm sorry, $8 million worth of fund balance in 21, 2021. Uh, the orders did a prior year adjustment of roughly $600,000. That brings us up to $8.6 million. We have the changes that we already went over between audited amounts and breaking down that. So you can see how we get to the $3.1 million of revenue surplus. And then we underspend expenditures by about $540,000, which gives us our $6.3 million surplus. Then we have a change in what's committed funds and restricted funds. That happens every year. Uh, we've never really pointed it out before because it was such a small number and our overall number was not that large. So going forward, we're going to incorporate that so that we can actually follow that along and see how the total impact is. The cumulative change to the fund balance then for the 21, 22 year was about $3.9, $3.85 million. That plus the $600,000 plus the starting balance gives us a total unchanged, unassigned fund balance of $12.5 million. After that, you can see our cap is 7% of this year's budget, $118.9 million or $8.3 million. That's where we get this 1.6 million or four point, I'm sorry, that's where you get the 4.136 million dollars that was on the prior page for what we transferred to the capital projects. That is now becomes an expenditure that added at $123,776,371 and 45 cents of expenditures gets you that $127.9 million we referenced previously. So that's how all the numbers tie out. But what, what leads us to our, um, variances? So over here you can see we had about $13 million of variance between $127.5 million of revenue, uh, which $10.3 million is one-time adjustments, which we went, just went over. And then you have the $13.5 million of which about $14 million is one-time adjustments, which we kind of went over. But we're going to look deeper into those. So the first area we have is the revenue. We break this down. I have on the next page is the breakdowns of them. I'm going to go through them as best they can through my memory. Uh, so the real estate taxes, the first one, we already mentioned Shenandoah impacted that by $793,000. Had we not received that, our local real estate taxes would have been about $119,000 under budget. Our interim real estate taxes were about $1.1 million. We budgeted 450. Prior years, you're looking roughly around $425,000. So we budgeted 450, thinking that was a good number. The economy was much better than we thought coming out of COVID and obviously the interest rates being down. There was a lot of interim real estate taxes being paid. Earned income taxes, we were told to budget roughly about $8 million. We were told then by PASBO and, uh, Forecast Five and several other groups, we should take a 20% haircut on that. When we looked at our top 10 taxpayers, we noticed that only one of them was really having issues. So we decided based on that to take a 10% haircut. So that's why we had $7.1 million. And honestly, the economy went fine. Uh, we got the EIT that we anticipated. We didn't have to take that. But coming out of COVID, at the time when this decision was made, and I'll say made in May or June of 2020, you know, you're, you're kind of 2022, I'm sorry, 2021, trying to figure these things out. So it's roughly where we had been recommended and actually we were less conservative than some other school districts in the area. That gave us a $1.2 million. less conservative than some other school districts in the area. That gave us a $1.2 million variance. Real estate transfer taxes have been averaging about a million one. Again, grid economy, the numbers proved out, we're about $665,000 over what we had budgeted. The delinquent real estate taxes, when you take out Shenondale, were about $91,000, $92,000 short. The IDA fund is a pasture from LEAs. We've typically roughly been right around 890, $800, $900,000. We have 895,000 in there. We're about $194,000 over on that area. The donations, so we budget roughly $90,000 worth of fees and donations that we collect, activity funds and stuff like that. Then we add in the budget change for the, how we account for grants. That gives us up to the $333,000 that you see in actual revenue. Then when we take that out, our $90,000 projection was only off by about $8,342. The receipts from other LEAs, that concludes a 1617 matter where we did not receive the revenue of $332,335.51. When you take that out, we actually were under budget by about $3,500. And then we had the prior year revenue expenditures, which included postage that was being refunded, tuition to an outplacement and a comp ed fund that came back that were our three biggest drivers on that. I'm going to skip through my verbiage here. Looking into the state revenue, the basic subsidy, the special education subsidy, those were approved by the state after our budget was approved. So what we do is we always use the whole harmless, we budget what we got this year, and that's how we put that number in there. So we know what to account for. The state can't go below that in theory, but we never know what the number is going to be until they actually approve their budget, which has typically been July, August, sometimes September. The rent sync fund, that is the plan con. We got to work on getting a tighter number on that. That will be running off eventually as plan cons not been around for a while. So ultimately that will run off. The school grant, that was obviously something we didn't plan on. So that was the one-time adjustment associated with that. And then you have social security and retirement. That is basically due to the fact that staffing differences on what we budgeted for staff, staff not hired, staff that was not put in place or came in later or at a lower salary. So that's where the social security and retirement comes in. When we look at the federal and other revenue, I mean predominantly this comes down to grants. This is where our money comes in. Our Title I money was actually lower than we had anticipated. So we got a $26,000 shortfall with regards to Title I. We did not receive any access funds of $265,000, which we budgeted for. So we're actually under there. And all other federal revenue was about $20,000. When you take out the grants that we didn't anticipate, the leases and an insurance claim, our federal revenue was actually under by about $272,000, predominantly due to access not having any funds for us. Moving into the expenditures, we'll start with the salaries. Obviously, administration staff was about $76,000 over budget. You had the confidential staff about 17.5 over budget. Professional staff was 1.4, 1.36 million dollars under budget. Now, that's where I want to point out, one of the things that we do, these numbers are, when you look at the budgeted expenses are our original budgets. They're not with any transfers or anything being done. We know we're going to transfer about 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars of our salaries and benefits associated with professional staff to cover substitute expenses where we lowered that money from prior years of 1.6, 1.7 million dollars. It's down around 600, $400,000. So that's where that money will ultimately go. That accounts for all the attritional savings that we've experienced in the past. And one of the things that actually Mr. Winters recommended is we actually look into lowering the revenue associated with that also because we don't anticipate getting revenue from those savings. That's something that we'll be looking at. The support staff, $358,000 coming up in next year's budget. If you remember my presentation, we're pulling out seven PCAs that go unbudgeted every year due to the certifications that are required. So we won't be needing them anymore. We've already taken care of them and the costs of the outsourced placements. So we're going to be removing those for the budget. So that will help offset that number. The teamsers is due to overtime and casual help, depending on what we need. And then coaches, sponsors and supplemental, they're coming out of COVID. We didn't have a lot of programs running. We were running boosts. So there was like math club didn't run. There were several other extenuating circumstances that didn't run that with regards to the salary. Overall, we're about $1.7 million underspent on our salaries. When we move into the benefits, PES or social security directly related to salaries, that's about $1,050 on those items. Our medical benefits are based on the time. So life event changes, marriages, divorces, births, all that information changes our medical prescription, eye care and dental care. The medical was off by about $383,000. That's probably due to the timing of when people came in as well as life events. Prescriptions, $91,000 out of a 2.1 million budget. Eye care was really close, $1,600 off. Dental was off by about $68,000. And I'll remind you, there has not been any increase in our eye care or dental on our budgets. We're pretty much holding flat on that year after year. A tuition reimbursement, $300,000. That's our contractual obligation that we budget for every year. We underspent that by $169,000. Unemployment compensation, this year was only about 1,800. Prior year was about 50, I think, if my memory serves correct. So we budgeted 35 as an estimate. Obviously, unemployment, you're taking a guess at what the number will actually be, how many people will choose to leave or become unemployed. Workers' comp is through SDIC. We had a budget of $165,000. We actually had a good year. We did not have a lot of slip and falls. We had a lot of, we did get some rebates with regards to that. And we already spent $150,000. And then all other benefits were underspent by about $4,500. When we go into the next area, this is the buildings. So these are the different things that go on in the buildings. You'll notice that the overall, the buildings originally, the original balance overspent by $127,716. But then when you take the one-time adjustments of about $243,000, we actually underspent by $115,000. Some of the key things that I'll point out, our head, we got a new building. So we didn't spend as much as we thought we were going to with the needs that. Eagleville had the furniture. That's why that was overspent. So all the furniture that was in the new space that was created was paid for under the Eagleville budget. Woodlands close, but in fairness, it also included all the full day kindergarten for all the different buildings and all the furniture that we purchased and the equipment under that. The high school budget, we're going to be looking at why that was $97,000 underspent and seeing where that expenditure was and why we did not use it. But again, overall, the buildings come in about $115,000 short. Moving into the departments, the business office, my office, the biggest area of our, we overspent by $11.5 million. As I said before, that's your, that's going to be your the Shenondale expenses that are going to come through the trap capital transfer to capital for the surplus, the transfer of capital with related to Shenondale and this amount over to 7%. So that accounts for $11.3 million of that. The other overspending is predominantly due to the legal expenses that we had. Facilities was slightly over by $31,000 when adjusting for the grants that were spent under the facilities. Personnel, $1.2 million ever spent. Again, that's where we anticipate the transfer, $1.1 million at least every year. So that would basically offset that number. So that's a good number. Maybe we need to bump it up a little more as to what we anticipate to get in there. But realistically, that's going to be a good one. I will point out while I'm talking about that, one of the reasons why personnel was there is because we had some turnover and we had time filling some of the positions. The turnover this year is not nearly as much, not even close. So I don't think we're going to have nearly as much funds to transfer to personnel as we had in the past. The superintendent's budget, that it was over by $108,000. That's predominantly due to all the different changes that we had in our security with security with events that we were doing, the sporting events. We added APC as a contractor in there that was unbudgeted for at that time, but it was a good decision to help keep the events under control. Technology typically comes down to the leases that we talked about. However, the other $166,000 that's noted on there is due to a change in leases. Previously, we were buying, getting our leases in July. We moved that up to May. And the reason is that helps technology be able to exchange the Chromebooks while the students are still in school instead of trying to collect them all, hand them all out over the summer. So that actually will disappear. That will catch up on that over time, but that was a decision that was made at that one point in time to help out with the technology and the transfer to the students to better support them. Transportation was under budget by about $750,000. That's due to the lack of ability for first student to run the 94 routes that we had planned for as well as a reduction in subsidy reduced that we actually pay the MCIU when they were running our work studies. We made several changes with our work studies. So that first student now with, picks up all the, all the work studies that were being done previously through some of the VAALGO contracts and stuff that we did. That's all internal now. We also made a change to bring the work studies back home and ride the buses home as part of inclusive practices. So that change has already lowered some of the other runs and expenses associated with that. That's all going to be accounted for in this year's budget as we go through that. So I don't think that'll be there each year going forward. And then all the other departments had $137,000. The one I left out, and I'm going to go back to right now, is pupil services. We budgeted $7.6 million and spent $10 million. This is why we qualify for this, the ability to take the exception. $2.4 million spent more on pupil services than we had before. I take out the small $372,000, I end up still with about a $2 million overspend in pupil services. And it's not like we have a choice. Charter schools are going up and the services are coming through that we need to provide. And we also have students that are being allowed to stay until they're age 22. So that's something to consider as we work with the pupil services budget as we go forward. And that ends my presentation. Take any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Questions, members on my right? Seeing none, members on my left, Ms. Cancr.
I just want to say thank you for actually putting in the notations of like number one and writing an explanation. I think it's important for the public to read each scenario as they break down both the expenditures and the, the revenue. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Cancr. Any other comments or questions? Again, we use this information as, as a, as a, as a, as a point of reference with respects to, you know, managing the preparation of this coming budget for the 23, 24 school year. So with that said, the next presentation Mr. Bicker has is recommendation for your consideration and approval next week's meeting for a five-year extension on a transportation contract with First Student. Mr. Bicker?
Thank you, and Dr. Zerby. So back in September 22, we, First Student was talking about the idea of a five-year extension to the existing contract. Their proposal included two different options. The first option was a straight five-year extension. The second option was a phased-in cost increasing per route, the per route fee in next year's, which is the last year of our existing contract. So that we don't have such a jump and we're looking at like an 18 to 20% jump at that time when we started talking versus an eight and an eight, where we ended up actually coming to. Currently, Methacra School District has the lowest rate in the area of $12.5 per route, lower than anyone else. Next year, our rate will be $16.88 per route, lower than anyone else in the county. And we're talking 72 passenger buses. Just so we are on the same page here. I didn't check every single rate to every single type of them. These numbers are already established rates for the 22, I'm sorry, 2024 and 2025. At the other districts, Methacra School District was estimating an increase in the 2425, which is two years out, increased somewhere between 20 to 25%. This would place our 2425 rates somewhere between $3.69 and $385 per route. When we have the next one is the pricing area in our charts. These are actual rates that we have out there. Abington's looking at, and I'm going to stick with the 2324. We're looking at about 30764 for our rate. Abington's a 356, Colonial's a 347. They do pay rent at that location. So that is an adjust, that needs to be adjusted then. Perk Valley's 32471, Springford's 33075, Whistahicken is 32452. Lower Moreland was going out to bid. They just got that and we'll hit them later as we complete this and get into where Lower Moreland actually fell. Perk Valley and Springford are any schools that have a committed company that serves no other schools. Right now, Perk Valley is using STA. And Springford's got Custard's Garage as their sole provider for transportation. Colonial, as I noted, does pay rent. Why they pay rent and then pay, then they get charged back for it is, I don't, I don't understand, but that's how they chose to do it. When removing the costs that are rent from the per route cost, we end up with an adjusted 22425 figure of about 340, 354, 369, 385 and 401 as we carry that out from the numbers that are up above. The numbers I'm providing go out further than the chart because those came in after this chart was done. I wanted to insert those for the last years because they've extended that right now at this point in time based on their negotiations. It hasn't been a board approved yet. So getting the current prices for First Student from next year's route, the one I want to point out here is Lower Moreland, second from the bottom. Just got this contract on $414.84 per route. Okay, we're looking at, we're, if we go with this six-year piece, which I'm recommending, this phase in the cost rather than have a big jump, would be at 32670. So it's more, much more palatable at our number than theirs. And with the exception of Narsetown's van, I do believe we are lower, Owen Central Bucks Van. Our 72 passenger buses would still be the lowest out of that group of first students, school districts that they support. Okay, after numerous negotiations, this is what we were able to work out. We'd have an 8% raise in price in the 2324 versus the 1.7% currently. In the contract, we'd have 8% in 2425 and then four and a quarter percent each year thereafter. The mid-days would go up to 7209, a 9% increase, and then they would go at 375 each year thereafter. I know everyone says 374, that's just a rounding as to where the numbers, because of pennies, can't split a penny. And then you have the after-school routes would mirror the mid-days. This is in hopes of trying to attract more drivers to be able to stay and do some of these after-school activities and routes. And we also have the addition of a box truck. Now, that's important because it helps run courier routes and it can help run courier routes in the middle of the day for the school district, for food services, for anything that we need them to. It will also help with transporting athletic events, carrying equipment or anything that we need to an athletic event as well as anyone that's going to music in parks with their kids in the middle school. They don't want to put their instruments on the bus and carry them. It's a seating, all that stuff. We could actually property store them on a box truck and transport them on that. The rates also are inclusive of vans and electric vans. We'll be looking to change out our expiring vans with electric vans once we're in a position to charge them. Currently, obviously, there's no place to charge them right now, but that's something we're looking down in the future to take care of. Electric bus pricing was not included in this. We'd have to negotiate that primarily because an electric bus costs $300,000 and a diesel bus costs $100,000. And until the price of electric buses come down at this point in time, our rates went and cover that. Already mentioned that it includes a box truck, changes the midday extracurricular. It also includes five $1,500 scholarships for the Methacra graduates and increases our routing costs to $75,000 per year. The impact, the driver's starting rate for a driver will increase $2 an hour going from 23 to 25. The top rate will go to 3179 per hour, highest rate in the area for first student sites. The time to reach the top rate will be cut in half from six years to three years. The annual increased pay will be set at 3.75% per year. And our router will also receive an increased pay. That's why the routing, it's kind of a wash on the increase in the router because we're just covering the expense of that. The intrinsic value to the school district, continuity of service. I mean, this is the best year we've had in six years. The staff down there has done a wonderful job of making sure that we've been able to get this kickoff done. We didn't even have a call, a call group or anything. We actually had a great start to the year. The marketplace has changed. The proposed rates that we have are reflective of the current market. The concern is that we, we go out to bid in 18 months from now. We're going to be looking at a much significantly higher rate than the 32670 that we already are proposing in this. It increases the driver's rates, which should translate into them attracting more drivers and keeping the drivers. The agreement starts in the process of looking to phase in hybrid plugins. And obviously, like I keep pointing out, it's spreading the cost of the contract out over six years versus five years, which for us from a budgeting point of view, is a much more palatable way of taking that big jump that we would be getting hit in 2425. And I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Questions from members of the board on the contract extension? To my right? Seeing no questions. To my left? Any questions? Ms. Drummond?
I just wanted to revisit the increase. So if we were going to not go with this approach and we were going to go out and have a bid after the contract ends, the suggestion is that there would be a 20% to 25% increase at that time?
Maybe, maybe more, yes.
Or maybe more.
Yes.
And instead-
414 that Lower Moreland just settled for would impact our numbers.
Mm-hmm. So instead, we're taking the increase as an 8% and 8% of 4%, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on the contract? Again, this will be on the agenda for your approval. If you have any questions between now and next week, please contact Mr. Bricker. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. We're going to move on to the agenda. As you can see, next week, we have a number of presentations, and then we will go on to the reports. This evening, just under the reports section, I just want to mention two things. The Audubon Elementary School update that we have as a marker on every agenda. I am targeting for next month to be coming before the property committee and then hopefully before the board with some updates on some of the recommendations. So you can look forward to that. Again, our deadline to get something before the board for consideration and use of the property is in June of 2023. The demolition process for that building is progressing as per the schedule. And the last thing under that I want to just mention is an update on a couple of other items. So over the next several months, I will be bringing forward a number of presentation updates on programs that have been implemented recently, as well as have been recognized across the Commonwealth for excellence and innovation. As an example, I will be providing an update on the full-day kindergarten program, our REACH program, our Fab Lab Development Initiative, the Arrowhead Building Dedication, our annual strategic plan update, and more. This board has been very instrumental in paving the path forward for many of these initiatives. So in the coming months, my team will have much to share, and it should be noted that we all have much to be proud of. So with that, we're going to move on to the agenda for fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you again, Dr. Zerby. This month for your approval, we have the list of bills, treasures report, budgetary transfers. Each year, we go over the facility use rates, which are pass-through expenses for people utilizing our facilities. We change in the game manager rate by $13, decreasing that by 13 cents, I'm sorry, to 25.36 to 25.23. We'll be reducing the cust- increasing the custodial rate by $1.29. We'll be increasing the food service worker rate by $1.70, and we'll be reducing the auditorium director by 22 cents. Just so you know that this is the pass-through rate, not the actual pay that the individuals are getting, but these are the pass-through rates that we'll be charging. The reductions are really due to the fact that Peasars went from 35.26 down to 34. We also have for your approval is the MCIU membership budget for 23, 24 in an amount of $1,561,980 with Methacron's contribution of $73,367. This represents an increase for Methacron of 22.02 from last year. We have the contract extension, the five-year contract extension with First Student, as I just went over in my presentation. For Arrowhead, we have 10 different items. We have change order 34 for 15.58.26, which is going to be no impact to the actual cost because it's just going to be offsetting GCCCD 04, also for the same amount. We have GCOCO 35, which is the moving of the district boxes from storage, so that they can finish up the work, $6,219.30. Change order 36 for additional pipe at the Stormwater Basin per the civil engineers as required for the NPDES permit at a cost of $4,179.60. Change order 37 for a water tanker truck. So this is actually going to be $84,200, but it's also going to be replacing three other CCDs, CCCD 01, 02, and 03, which were originally entered for $100,000. So this will actually reduce the cost of the project by $15,800. We have a plumbing contractor change order 04 to lower the flush valves in 11 toilet rooms to coordinate with the height of the grab bars at a cost of $1,129.12. We have the additional cost of $21,202.78 for Hills Carnes to complete all their testing throughout the scope of the project. And then we have four credit change orders as we start to wrap up the project for $117,700 roughly for the GC, $71,300 roughly for the mechanical contractor, $93,683.71 for the electrical contractor, and roughly $38,000 for the plumbing contractor. Under the 2021 master plan, we have general contractor change order 04 as a credit of $221,958. This is a return of unused allowances and a credit for the work not needed on the Press Box Foundation. And then we have the master plan projects. We have the Audubon demolition approved Sergeant Enterprises as the asbestos abatement contractor at a cost of $97,650. Approved environmental control systems as the AHERA designated person, environmental risk engineer consultant for the Methacron School District at a cost of $47,150. Approved the purchase of three cargo containers to be used as storage as previously approved, the product scope of $11,863.50. And approve L and J transportation to move items at Audubon Elementary that were stored there back to the buildings as per previous project scope that was approved by the board at a cost of $4,784. Under the planetarium, we have the approval of Irwin Seating Company for seating at the planetarium of also $53,852.50. This is part of the previous approval of expenses. Approved train to provide the required HVAC work associated with the project on the planetarium at a cost of $30,175.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Any questions from members to my left? Ms. Reese?
Not a question. I just wanted to, I know my report for the IU isn't till next week, and I have a lot to share, but I did want to let the board know that this is the first increase in three years. They've done a really good job keeping expenses, you know, at a reasonable rate. So I did want the board to know that.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other questions from members to my left? On any of the finance items, how about members to my right? Seeing no questions? We'll move on to matters of personnel. Dr. Surgini?
Thank you, and good evening. For your consideration in February, we have the following personnel items. One resignation classified Jill Sherman, personal care assistant. We extend our gratitude to Jill for her more than 15 years of service to the students of Methacron, and we wish her all the very best. One employment professional, Jamie Davis, for the position of special education instructor at Skyview. It's worth noting that Jamie completed her student teaching with us here in Methacron and has been a long-term substitute. So we are very happy to officially welcome her to the Methacron family, and we look forward to the good work that she will do for the many decades to come. We have two changes of status classified. Both are movements from personal care assistants to the positions of monitoring assistant. Christine Manjari moves within the high school, and Jill Margiotti is moving from Skyview to Arcola. And we thank Christine and Jill for taking on these new roles. We have one uncompensated leave classified, Patricia Recupido, as noted. A series of supplemental contracts, including extracurricular and activity sponsor additions, additions to the winter and spring coaching lists, several items from the curriculum department, outdoor ed contracts for Skyview, and the high school wall of honor plaque creation. And then also two additions to the classified substitute list, Ann Reiner and Matthew Symes. Both are casual on-call custodians. We're very happy to welcome both Ann and Matthew, rather, to Methacron. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Surgini. Questions to members on my left? Ms. Reese?
Just, not to put you on the spot, but what, we're at one professional opening right now? Is that correct?
We have one, that's correct.
Okay. Which is right now the norm. So this leads me to my next question. How are we looking for the next school year? I'm asking this because it's been a very large conversation in education, and Methacron is lucky. We are probably not in the spot that some other districts will be in yet. But the amount of teaching certifications, it's just a very big topic. So I'm just kind of curious what your thoughts are for-
I'm currently aware of five contracts that we will have available next year, likely five, that we will be looking to fill. One is an elementary contract. There was a movement where we had an employee resign earlier in the year. We did post that internally. We had somebody move into that position or at least express interest. We did not move that individual this year. So as not to disrupt another class, but there will be an opening because of that next year. We have three retirements that I've already noted to the board, and we do have one more that I will be bringing to the board as an addition next week that we just found out about. So right now, we're looking at at most five contracts. So, but we are always keeping an eye on that, having conversations about it, and providing information as soon as we know it.
Okay, and then it was one, thank you for sharing that the new hire is a former student teacher and long-term sub. That's kind of something we talked about. And I know we've talked in education about the program in bringing student teachers in from a certain, I don't remember the institution.
Gwynn and Mercy.
Yeah, is that's all on track and going well?
Absolutely. We're in our second semester of that right now. And then in addition, Dr. Walsh and I are meeting with another university in about two weeks to talk about a secondary partnership.
And I don't know how to, we, you know, everybody's kind of stealing from everybody type of thing. And there are some attractive things about working at Methacron. So at some point, I would like, I have an idea I'd like to share with you and Che, but I just, you know, I think people don't realize, and they're starting to. It used to be back when I was looking for a job, you were just happy to get an interview and happy to get a call, and you took it. And now it's, oh, well, I can get this here, that there. And I just have some ideas I want to share with you, but not right now. And then the only other thing, and this may not be something you're, you are 100% privy to, but with the addition of the supplemental contracts for the Skyview outdoor ed, I would assume that's back to the old standard overnight trip?
That's correct.
Yay!
For the first time since, I believe, 2019.
Okay, awesome. So kind of pretty much the same trip? I know you're not, okay.
They leave on, at the beginning of one school day, they're overnight one night and come back, I believe, at the end of the following school day.
At that same facility that they used to-
That's correct.
Awesome, wonderful. I'm so glad that that is back on track. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other questions? Ms. Drummond?
Thank you, Dr. Surgini, for the report. I just was wondering if you can remind me what a monitoring assistant is?
A monitoring assistant is a non-instructional assistant, so they will be helping with things such as hall duty, cafeteria duty, monitoring the hallways, providing assistance that's not directly involved with instruction. So it's very different than an instructional assistant that actually has state requirements associated with that position.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to my left? Seeing no other questions. To my right? Any questions? Dr. Surgini, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the matters of curriculum. We have Dr. Walsh. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, everyone. Under Section 11A for this evening, it's more just a review. The math and French textbook resources will be available for review at the Farina Administration Building beginning tomorrow through March 22, and I'll be seeking board approval at the action meeting on March 28. Just in FYI, as in the past, there will also be digital access for anyone who would like to review them after hours or aren't able to make it into Farina. Just contact the curriculum office, and we'll give you that access information. So the 30-day review will start tomorrow and running through March 22. And you can see the textbooks listed there, and the French textbook is listed last. Also for your review and consideration, we'll be seeking approval at the March 28 work, I mean, action meeting. It would be approving the Chapter 339 K-12 Counseling Plan for the 23, 26 school year. Again, this document will be able to be reviewed at the Farina Board Center starting February 22 tomorrow and running through March 22. It's also going to be available on the website for anyone who wishes to download the entire plan. And it's right here in its entirety, and they can review that as well. We'll be seeking both the curriculum textbooks as well as the Chapter 339 at the March 28. These were also shared at the Ed Committee meeting earlier this month. And then seeking your approval next week would be the approval of the revised curriculum for the 23, 24 school year for math, social studies, practical arts, and business education. And again, these documents were provided in full to all board members and were shared at the Ed Committee meeting previously this month. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Also, if you wouldn't mind, for the board, could you please provide an update on the library book review process that's under, that's being taken place?
Sure. There was a request made by a district parent of a student to review the eight books that are currently housed in the high school library. And as per Policy 109, a committee comprised of librarians, classroom teachers, and building administrators are currently reviewing those eight books. The committee will then meet shortly and submit a written report as part of the recommendations to both Dr. Zerby and myself sometime next month. That's an update of the process at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Any questions on any of the matters for curriculum from members to my right? Seeing none. How about members to my left? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Walsh. Could we just please add the option, the digital option that you mentioned for the material review as well as the extended hours? Could we add that to the agenda? That note and to the website, just so people are aware of that additional way to view the curriculum?
Sure.
The resources. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Reese?
Liz just took mine. I was going to repeat it, but it's an even better idea. I was just going to repeat to everyone because that's been an issue in the past. So thank you. And the only other thing I wanted to say, I know we're not approving the curriculum yet, but we are approving that it's out to be looked at. I wanted to thank everybody involved in all of this, all of this work. But I specifically wanted to thank the teachers that were involved in the pilot. It's a lot of, they put a lot of time and effort into the pilot, and they also spent quite a bit of time answering our questions at the education meeting. And we really grilled them, and we appreciate their time and effort. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And Dr. Walsh, just to make a clarification on something that Ms. Reese mentioned. We are looking for an adoption of the textbooks at the March meeting. We are looking for an adoption of the Chapter 339 plan at the March meeting. But I thought we were looking for the revised curriculum for next week. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's a revision. It says there's no new curriculum. It's just revised.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Yeah, Mr. Winters?
No, to follow up on Andrea's point there, the I-Ready Mathematics Group was really impressive of how they came forward and the enthusiasm they have for this program is really great to see. There will, being somebody that voted for the previous change and knowing that there was more of a conflict among the staff and seeing more or less 100% support behind this program gives great confidence moving forward in the I-Ready.
Yeah, thank you. And we do appreciate all the pilot teachers who were part of this process. We're really thrilled to look forward to adopting that program.
Excellent. Seeing no further questions. Dr. Walsh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have matters of policy. Mr. Regina?
Yep, thank you, Dr. Zerby. For the policies under First Read, there are any major revisions to any of the said policies. For policies under Second Read, no changes since what we looked at last month. Just remembering that Policy 218 has some changes to the Off-Campus Activities Authority based on some recent legal guidance. And 218.2 had some of the threat assessment additions that were needed in that policy. Besides those two, everything else was fairly minor edits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Any questions on policies to members on my right? Seeing none. To my left? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Regina. And then we move on to other. Under gifts and donations, we have approved the generous donation from the community member in the amount of $15.54 for the backpack program. We see that we have a trip for the high school trip to participate in PMEA Regional Orchestra Event. And that is in Westchester, PA on March 9 through the 11th of 2023. We have a crossing guard recommendation to approve the adoption of the Resolution 23Z02, which requests the authority from the Westchester Township Board of Supervisors to assume the hiring and oversight of school crossing guards. And B, to authorize the administration to seek and engage a provider to conduct crossing guard services as directed by the superintendent of schools. Just a little bit of history on that particular, on this particular matter, under crossing guards. In more recent times, there- In more recent times, there have been some challenges with students at the high school parking on Anvil Drive. As a result of them parking on Anvil Drive, a number of the residents on Anvil Drive approached the church located on Cribble Mill Road directly across from the Farina Admin Center with being able to seek from Westchester Township a variance to allow for student parking. As such, it's my understanding that a variance application has been submitted and that the, it's not the Board of Supervisors, but the, the board that oversees the variances, the Code Enforcement Board, I can't remember the right name of the board, but it's my understanding that they'll be acting on that particular request on the next Tuesday, at the same time that we'll be, we'll have a meeting of School District Matters, if approved. And if the, our School District Board approves the resolution and the authorization to seek and engage a provider. In fact, the School District then could be able to provide a crossing guard for safe crossing from the parking lot of the church to the School District property for approximately one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. And then we move on to transportation. It would be approved, the drivers for the transportation employee rosters for the 22-23 school year. And before we move on and I turn it back over to Madam President, are there any questions on the other items? Members of the board? Seeing none. Oh, Ms. Drummond?
Just a shout out to the donor for the backpack program and a reminder that Giant and Audubon, there's still a few days left, one, I think through the end of February to do the roundup at the register at that store, and that will be donated to our backpack program.
And that's, oh, and Ms. Perdue?
In reference to the crossing guard, are both bullet points for the same item? Just want to make sure.
Could you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
Are both points listed for the crossing guard for 13 CRD, both for the same item? My understanding is yes. Is that correct? So one is adoption of 2302, and then the other one is to seek and engage a provider to conduct crossing guard.
Yeah, so what we're asking for is you do the adopt a resolution for us to gain the authority from Westchester Township. So it gives me the right to make application. It would then require Westchester Township to draft an ordinance allowing that. And then the second part of this is actually giving me the authority to seek and engage a provider. This wouldn't be something that we would do with our own existing staff. In fact, you know, there's typically some safety training and permission that comes along with this that that's needed. So for example, right now, the only people that can do that, that I'm aware of, are the fire police in the local community. And because they have that authority and that they have the training to do so. So in the interim, until we find a suitable, assuming everything gets approved in the interim, we're likely to seek their assistance as part of this process initially, the fire police.
Is there a, and I know that's not a definitive date, but is there an ETA for when any of this may start alleviating?
Well, we hope as soon as possible, but we have to do things within the regulation. And then that isn't always a speedy process. So just on a conversation today with Westchester Township Manager, and we're working to try to iron that out, to look at the, the best potential for something to take place. Now, the variable that we don't have many control over is how soon the church will act once all the approvals are in place. So that's kind of something we're also trying to work through them. So it was like a three-way conversation about how best to do this. Again, the challenge comes down to, while it's an inconvenience for the, or actually, according to the residents of Anvil Drive, it's not only an inconvenience but a safety challenge because of the narrow streets and the volume of parking there. It's also a safety challenge having students walk up from Anvil Drive along Germantown Pike. And so, you know, we really don't have any remedy to help that situation as a school district. But with respects to moving students from the church lot over to our property, we do have a reasonable remedy that seems not only to be a good idea to help with moving students safely from one piece of property to the other, but also being able to control some traffic so that we can actually get buses out on time. And so there might be some residual benefits for that activity to take place in the morning and the afternoon.
And since we'll, you know, we'll be voting on this next week, as will Westchester be voting, so I know we can't do anything until next week, have we thought ahead to, yes, the biggest thing is hiring after, if it's approved, hiring someone and training them, which is the biggest piece? And then who actually organizes the church parking?
Again, that's what we're, that's a variable that I'm not, I'm not really 100% sure how that's going to work, but we're working, it's a three-party conversation about how do they plan to do it. I have very little control over that, but what I am trying to get is the best-case scenario that at least the letter of the law is met by Westchester Township, and all the things are in place by the School District awaiting whenever that timeframe for the churches to unfold.
I just have a follow-up. And will you come back to us with exactly, I'm curious to see where the crossing guard will be placed. And I don't know, it may be too early in our logistics, but I'm wondering if you know, or if that's something that you have to share with us.
I certainly will share that with you in a diagram, but I'm not, I'm not certain I'll have that ready for next week. But we can certainly have that available as a communication to all board members prior to, you know, moving forward with the, with putting that anything in place.
And a follow-up to Ms. Perdue's question, is there any painting of lines or anything?
No.
Okay. Isn't that road belongs to Westchester? They don't want to paint lines?
There's a difference between having a crossing guard and having a crosswalk. We, if we were looking for a crosswalk, that would be a different process, and that would take a lot longer and likely not be approved.
Not, okay. Okay, thank you. And then, and I appreciate that because this, these issues have been going on for years, and people don't realize that it's very, very, it's not Mathacton saying, poof, you know?
No, I think I want to make it clear to the board. You are not obligated to do this. Okay, so I want to, I think it's only fair for you to, for me to share this because what I'm recommending is simply for the fact of safety for students. And, and, and knowing that, you know, if this is going to happen, and it would likely happen without our approval or whatever, then, then, you know, what mechanism is going to be in place to ensure the safe, you know, movement of those students on a daily basis? The problem I have is, my office is right there, and I can see that stuff on a regular basis. I can tell you that even when that lot was used previously, it was, it was a big challenge. And I'm recommending that we take these steps necessary, not, but not required, to make sure that if this does unfold, it is done with the safety of students in mind.
I'm sorry.
Until we come up with a better, until we come up with a better solution. I want to make sure that that's understood as well. Part of, it's my understanding that part of the variance will be, will include the fact that this will stay in place until such time that the district can, you know, provide parking on its own for, you know, the students that they don't provide parking for now. So we've gone through all these numbers. We might have somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 students who might want to drive. We have 297 spots, and you'd see the challenge.
I have one more question because we are talking about the safety of students, and I have, I am not opposed to a crossing guard for, for the safety of students at all. We keep talking about Anvil Drive and the Anvil Drive residents. We don't mention Germantown Pike, because that's, this is all new. I happen to drive by there every day on my way to work. I don't, and Germantown Pike. So I ask this because when you talk about the safety of students, that's the biggest concern. Do we know if parents are aware, I mean, these are, these are not, that their children are parking on Germantown Pike and walking? I mean, or is that our, I mean, I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I'll be honest, I have a 17-year-old. She doesn't park there, and I wouldn't allow her to do that. And I'm not judging anybody's decision. I'm just from Philadelphia, so I'm very nervous about, I'm used, you know. So anyway, I just, you know, we keep talking about Anvil Drive, but I walk, I drive by Germantown Pike and see them parking too. I mean, they're both not, I don't know. I just...
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Ms. Reese. I wasn't, I wasn't negating Germantown Pike, but the general, the general issue is Anvil, Germantown, with that little inlet right at that intersection. And with, with everything said and done, you know, nothing, just because a new lot is going to be created, doesn't necessarily mean that students would then still continue to park on Anvil or on Germantown Pike. But it's also, in working with the township, it's my understanding, and I'm not saying that this will definitely happen, but it's my understanding that they're seeking some other remedies that would help prevent the parking on those, on both of those locations. And the real challenge of this is everything falling into place simultaneously. And so it may not, it may look like it's out of order, but, but, but again, we're trying to do the things that are, that are appropriate with an eye to safety and a resolution for students, for our residents, and hopefully, you know, in due time, this will all work out well.
Just along that, is there a way to increase the signage or improve the signage about school zone hours and the 15 miles an hour along Cribble Mill to make sure that everyone turning on is aware of that they're in that school zone?
Yeah, I think, Ms. Drummond, you had shared that request with me earlier, and I made that request as part of our dialogue. It's something separate from the variance, and it's something separate from what they're trying to do in terms of signage down at those other two locations, but it is on the docket for consideration, and the Township Manager and I have had that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
And that should end all the agenda items here for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Next is dates for board members' calendars, to which I would like to highlight March 9, the Policy Committee Meeting, because we, that meeting has been canceled. There is a conflict on that evening, the ARC Alliance Awards, where Mathacton is being recognized for our Unified Sports, and Mathacton teachers being recognized for her advocacy efforts. So we are canceling that March 9 Policy Committee Meeting. And now it's time for Old or New Business.
A very quick plug from the Education Committee. It is now time when our students start choosing classes. And our staff has worked incredibly hard on something called the Program Planning Guide. So lots of questions come up in these next few weeks, whereas children are choosing their classes and parents are signing off on that. So there is an incredible document that our staff has put together to help secondary students with that. So I would encourage people to, to use it. It answers a lot of your questions, as most, most people are not educators, and they might be new at the high school thing. So...
Ms. Reese, thanks for bringing attention to that. I want to thank Dr. Gravine's High School Principal, as well as Dr. Walsh and his curriculum office for working on that, as well as the design work from Amanda Kelly. Any other, I'm sorry, go on.
No, it's okay. I had a piece of new business. This Thursday, Friday, Saturday, February 23rd to 25th, the Mathacton High School students are presenting Footloose in the Mathacton Auditorium at 7:00 PM. So that will be a great show, if you want to catch that. Anyone for, else for Old or New Business? All right. Seeing none. It is time for Courtesy of the Floor, an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are, that are or may be before the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of comments.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. I want to commend Mr. Bricker for the presentation this evening about the review of last, the fiscal year's revenue and expenses. It mentions that the, the escrow money was described as delinquent property taxes. I don't think there was anything delinquent about it at all. It was, the taxes weren't collected according to law. There is an issue of that escrow money not going back to the taxpayers. Regarding several changes in the Board of Directors, I think that, that's reason for reconsideration of the time limit imposed for Courtesy of the Floor. We went quite a few years successfully with a four-minute time limit. And I think that the three-minute time limit that's been in place for over a year is one reason for a decline in public participation in, in board meetings, which I don't think is a good idea. Several items on the, in the finance area regarding the asbestos abatement at Audubon. I see the price of over $47,000 for the environmental control systems onsite person seems to be very high. I think the asbestos abatement is probably a four or five-week effort. You know, let's say it's a five-week effort. That's, that's over $9,000 a week for, for one person. Over $9,000 a week for one person. That, that does not seem tenable in my mind. On the resources request, the first one for Ready Mathematics, it lacks quantities of texts, as is provided for each of the other resource additions. Also regarding comparisons of bus costs in a proposed new contract, Mathacton separately from the, per bus charges, Mathacton provides all the fuel for the buses, and it's unclear in my mind whether, whether that might account for the differences between the Mathacton rates and the rates of other schools, whether...
Thank you.
Whether fuel costs are not provided by the district.
Thank you.
into the search bar on the Mathacton District website, the first link takes you to the Funding and Nondiscrimination Statement. Quote, "This institution is prohibited from discriminating on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, including gender identity, and sexual orientation, disability, and age." End quote. What is missing from the Mathacton version of the federal civil rights law, civil rights law? Religion, that's what you're missing. Is it acceptable to discriminate against the children and families of this district based on their faith? This district is required to provide transportation to students that attend non-district schools. Policy 810 states, quote, "Transportation..." students that attend non-district schools. Policy 810 states, quote, "Transportation to the non-public school shall be provided on each day such school is in regular session, according to its adopted calendar and its adopted hours." On February 13th, Dr. Zerbi and the district violated Policy 810 and the P.A. Public School Code of 1949, Section 1361, by refusing to transport the 601 students of this district that are enrolled in non-public schools to their educational institutions on time. Furthermore, the district provides transportation to its public school students for all of their early dismissals. Yet, it does not provide the same transportation to non-public schools for their early dismissals. This district often likes to take a follow-the-leader approach, trying to justify its actions, saying, "Everyone else is doing it." Yet, surrounding districts like Norristown, Park Valley, and North Penn provide transportation to all students for all early dismissals. I have sent nine emails over the past two weeks to this district, and only Ms. Cancro and Ms. Rocco initially acknowledged me. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Marissa. Ms. Drummond refused to acknowledge my emails or even speak to me about my concerns. As Gandhi said, "Our ability to reach unity in diversity will be the beauty and test of our civilization." The nine of you have an opportunity to right a wrong. I stand before you today, asking you to investigate the district's transportation practices and put an end to the discrimination against children and families of this district that choose faith-based learning. Thank you.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor?
Well, since she brought up the February 13th thing, I do want to mention that I had a serious problem with the two-hour delay that caused people to scramble for daycare at the last minute. I think that was.
Could you, could you state your name?
Yes. My name's Jenny Reimy Schneider. I live in Eagleville, Lower Providence. That wasn't why I came up to talk. I just want to mention it, since she brought it up. I think the two-hour delay was wrong, and it was disruptive to parents that had to scramble at the last minute for daycare. Anyway, I'm here to speak in defense of books. I recognize we're not at a point where we're voting on this yet, but I just want to say that one of my greatest childhood joys was learning to read as soon as I was able to walk. My mother was a reading specialist who worked with individuals struggling to learn English, many of whom had come here from other countries, some who were born locally but had reading disabilities, lack of family support, or financial or other problems that lessen their ability to perform well in school. Many had dropped out of school but were determined to finish as adults. Access to books which discussed other cultures and lifestyles not only helped these individuals dedicated to learning at a later date feel comfortable with reading materials, but also allowed my mother and the other tutors, of which I became one, to relate better to their perspectives and their life challenges. I feel that limiting access to any book limits our ability to understand and empathize with others. Being exposed to information, as much information as possible, is the duty of our public schools, and it's what makes us well-rounded and lets us appreciate the wonderful differences that make us unique. Disallowing a book because it may contain references to difficult issues faced by our fellow humans devalues the legitimacy of their experiences. Censorship of information, which others may find unnecessary to know about, removes those options for all of us. Just as with many things I prefer not to see or hear about, each person can choose what they are comfortable letting their child read, but should not decide for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor tonight?
Brian Urshaw, Lower Providence. A lot of discussion lately about pools, crossing guards, nothing about the budget. Last I checked, the proposed tax increase is still north of 4%. It should be on the agenda every single month from here on out. The first student contract extension, has anybody asked why first student proposed a five-year extension? What do they know that you don't? Why aren't you getting bids for this contract? Last I checked, it's about a $7 million expense for the district. There was a nice comparison of rates among school districts, but it's been a comparison of the entire contract. Without such comparison, just review of rates is an incomplete analysis. And I'm not sure who negotiated this contract, but 8% increases for the first two years, followed by 4.25% for the next four, that's a bad deal, great deal for first student. And also, addressing parking issues, why don't you make getting the buses off the high school campus part of this contract extension? That might alleviate some of your parking problems. Regarding the financial review, can someone explain what the $600,000 prior year adjustment was? Was that correction of an error? And then looking through this presentation, which I'll delve into in more detail at some point, there's a lot of significant million-dollar variances, very indicative that you got a problem in your budget process. That needs to be looked into sooner rather than later. Last I checked, the budget for the school district was supposed to break even. Just a reminder, everybody, of that. The 21-22 school year was the sixth consecutive year with a multimillion-dollar budget surplus at $3.6 million, six-year total, budget surplus is $17.5 million. And I found it disappointing that in the current budget draft, Dr. Zerbi initially included a lot of capital expenditures, which he subsequently took out, but that was after putting $11.3 million into a capital reserve. What other capital expenditures are in the general fund budget? There's also $11.3 million only in the capital reserve, and there's a lot of articles recently about the PA Attorney, PA Auditor General's activities with respect to school districts. You might want to look at one article entitled, "PA Auditor General Accused Failure Area School Districts of a Shell Game to Raise Taxes." It sounded very similar to what's happening in Methacton. As of in a forecast prepared for the current year, I noticed in the budget presentation, you still compare one budget to the next, a very irrelevant comparison when you're posting multimillion-dollar surpluses. The initial budget also included seven PCA positions, seven PCA positions totaling over $400,000, $450,000 in expenses. I think I raised this issue with the conclusion of last year's budget process, that someone needs to look at empty positions in the budget. Mr. Winters was pretty adamant that every position in the budget was needed, and lo and behold, there's seven positions, $450,000 that are in this year's budget that are probably just going to be a surplus. There's a big problem with the budget process in Methacton. Finally.
Thank you.
One last comment. I know we're spending several hundred thousand, if not million dollars on a planetarium.
Thank you.
Can somebody explain the educational value.
Thank you for your comments.
Of laser light shows I see advertised.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Malik Warzester. Pool, option one, blank, or $4 million? Option two, new, $10 million? New high school, $120 million? What the heck? I, you know, I, I got a sick feeling in my stomach, just watching this. Since when did we ever have the board have to approve a report submitted by a couple of consultants? When did that become a practice? That's a first. And being a right-to-know specialist myself, I think the reason you're doing that is so you can claim that that report's a draft until approved by your board, so we can't look at it. So can you tell me now, can we look at that report that everybody saw with blank pages and different options? Or are you going to hold that from the public and then wait until you get close to pool time and then say, "Okay, maybe we'll give it to you, maybe we'll approve it"? It's not right, not transparency. The way I look at the pool situation and the high school is, welcome to Methacton Construction Corporation. You guys build more facilities than freaking Toll Brothers. It's crazy, it's crazy. Now, do you know how your two consultants get paid? You know, your pool consultants, and then, you know, Veritas, Truth, Bureau of Truth, you got working at the, for the high school? Do you know how they get paid? They don't get paid by the hour. They get paid with the job, new construction. So there's really no incentive not to build, because they make their money when they do build. I, I think that's a problem. Now, my other question is, what is the big love affair with KCBA architects, right? So you got KCBA for Eagleville, Audubon, Arrowhead, Planetarium, yeah, I still got 45, Dave, new pool, and $120 million new high school. KCBA, they hit the mother lode here. But why is that? Why don't you get somebody else who can look through a different lens? Because KCBA always seems to agree with what you want, Dave, right? Just like the pool guy. I told you what was going to happen. Not worth the time, effort, and money to go ahead and fix the pool. You're going to need to build a new pool, right? Thing is, the reason I'm sick is I can see it and do nothing about it. It's sad.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor tonight? All right, seeing none. Comments from board members? Ms. Rocco.
Mr. Bricker, can you touch on the fuel costs that Mr. Andrews mentioned, and if those costs are included in those other district rates?
So typically, the school districts, because they can buy on the futures market and in bulk, typically pick up the fuel cost. I don't know.
It's, it's because they can buy it without the tax, okay? So, so most districts would, would benefit from having their own fuel for the buses with third parties transport. It would cost the third parties more, because it would include the tax associated with the fuel.
And then to Ms. Bradbury's point, can you touch on the busing to non-publics? I know as a non-public parent, we get two per year, early dismissals. So we are told at the beginning of the year, you're a Methacton student, you get this day and this day, and that's it. At least that's from one of my child, one of, one of my children's schools. I don't even know how it works at the other, because I drive him, because his bus is over an hour long, and it's only a few miles away. But in any event, I do know parents have asked about the routing, because it seems very long for some of the non-publics, especially for such a short distance. I know a bus was cut out for some of the non-public schools, so it, it then created a longer busing route. But can you touch on that? With, is, is the policy two per year? Is that up to the school that they go to? Can you just touch on that in general?
So what we do is we provide the same number of half-days the Methacton School District has. So next year, I think we're planning four, so there'll be four next year. So it's really up to how many the school district has. It's how many we supply the non-publics, in accordance to, in the same for both places.
Okay, so just, just to clarify, so if, if this year was two, then, we had two?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so then, and that communication goes to every non-public school, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just real quick, I wanted to address Mr. Andrews' comment about the math resources not being numbered, or not having amounts. I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's a K to eight, so it's, it's large, and there's consumables, so I believe that is why it's very hard to quantify. Not, I mean, obviously, there will be some quantification, but those numbers will probably, you know, that's kind of why I wanted to give that explanation to him. And then just to, I just had a quick question. It made me think of it from what Ms. Rocco said, because I, when she said non-public. So those 601 children that we transport, I would imagine those schools are, are not all faith-based. They are many different types of schools, whether it be for learning needs or what have you. Is, is, is that correct? Because the term is really non-public, or parochial, or, or private, or parochial?
Parochial and charter is typically what they, they are.
And I'm a.
And private, and private.
Okay, and, and I'm a public school teacher and parent, so please forgive my ignorance. Isn't it also, and I might not know, but you don't have to, even though you might choose a faith-based institution, you may not necessarily be of that faith, of that correct, I don't know if anyone, maybe that seems like a strange question, but I don't think you have to be correct?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. I just was curious. And then Mr. Bricker, as far as transportation, because Ms., I apologize if you felt I was ignoring your emails. I was not. I, I must have misread them. I thought they were, they were asking for Ms. Drummond to respond, and, and I believe she did twice. And I also believed that your questions were more related to administration or, or transportation. And you may not know this answer, Mr. Bricker, but out of the 601 children that we do transport, were there many calls about February 13th? Are you aware?
There was not a lot of calls. A couple of schools, that's about it.
I'm sorry?
Just a couple of schools called.
Okay.
Some of the other ones already had their two-hour delay.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I, I wasn't aware, because we're not always privy to that kind of information as board members. Thank you so much.
I'd like to bring clarity to a couple of things. There was some question about the pool report, if I could just clarify that. So the pool report, similar to, as I recommended, and I stated earlier this evening, that the Bureau of Veritas report, which is a facility assessment report, will both be reviewed by the board and the administration and targeted for an adoption in April. The reason we do that is so that, because it's so voluminous, it, it takes, it takes a lot of time to make sure that we are getting everything that we ask for in terms of the information to do, and, and it gives us an opportunity to go back and ask questions. This evening is a great example. Where's option one? I haven't had a chance to get through the report yet, so, you know, I'm not going to recommend that you take this on, and we take this, once we adopt it, we take on the responsibility associated with the things that are outlined in that report. So once we confirm and ask all the questions that we need to ask, we then will, will have these items come before you as a board action item, you adopt them, and then, similar to the process that we took in 2016, we will then manufacture a, what's called a master plan. That master plan will then take the Bureau of Veritas reports for all the facilities, the pool report, and any other types of reports that are related to facilities, and turn that into a schedule of possible means to make remedy to some of those situations. So for example, we would, we, in 2016, we, we did a master plan out 10 years, and we said, over the, each of the next 10 years, we're going to try to, oops, bundle some of the, the projects together so we can leverage the cost and, and, and try to make that, make that, make a stab at some of those matters. So in all, in all fairness, we've actually followed the exact same process that we did in 2016. So I know how important the facilities and then the long-term decisions, whether or not we make renovations, or we fix something here, or we build something new. Those decisions have to be made after we completely understand all the information. And certainly, you as members of, of the board, want to make sure that we make the, whatever the best investment is for the long-term benefit of the students of the Methacton community. I think another note, there was, there was reference to budgeting in terms of similarities between an Auditor General's report and that, which, which the assumptions are that the Methacton School District is doing. It should be noted that the Methacton School District was not, you know, noted in that Auditor General's report, so that's a clear indication that Methacton School District wasn't looked at as a, as doing whatever the Auditor General report has suggested. However, I can tell you that there is no such thing as a shell game in, you know, public education use of, of funds. Everything requires a policy, there's laws associated, and there's auditors that audit the books. So with that, and it's an independent third-party auditor. So if there was any challenge or concern that, you know, Mr. Bricker, or Dr. Zerbi, anybody is, is doing something that they shouldn't be, you bring it to my attention, or Mr. Bricker's attention, and we'll get you the information. Or, as you know, board members, when we. Or, as you know, board members, when we do the third-party independent auditors, guess what the auditors do? They contact you directly to make sure that you don't suspect that there's any misgivings or wrong things occurring for the administration. So you're involved in that process, and I want to assure the public that while there may be an auditor general's report and some speculation with some districts, none of that is related to any of the activity or the work that we did here in Methacton. So I'll stop with my comments.
All right, I just have one comment, and one is just about the transportation issue and my email responses to Ms. Bradbury. I did respond twice, and only twice because many of her questions were of a legal nature regarding public school code and allegations of discrimination. She did ask how many non-public school students were transported, and I did research that question for her, and that is how she knew that 601 students are transported. And I just had a question too about the asbestos abatement, did we get bids for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other board members? Ms. Perdue?
Yeah, I just have, just because transportation seems to be a hot topic, just based on the two-hour delay, can I get clarification or confirm, when a two-hour delay is announced, what's the communication that goes out, the timeline for that? And also, what is the process for busing? I believe you explained to Ms. Rocco, can you clarify again? First, the communication.
So typically, when I say typically, generally due to an emergency or a weather emergency, I would make the call typically between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m. on a morning, which gives you, as parents, you know, just a few hours, probably less than two, depending on what level your children are in, to make a determination of how you best will manage the rest of the day. In this case, as you all know, you know, it was more than a week with the notice, not only provided to families, but also provided to the other sending schools. And is there a second part to your question, Ms. Perdue?
So, about a week notice was provided to parents of Methacton and also ascending schools. And then, on that day, Methacton students are picked up two hours later. Those in the non-public schools, or charter schools, or whatever it is, are not bused to school that day because they don't have a two-hour delay?
No, we bus those students at the same delay. So we would pick them up. They may not have chosen to take the two-hour delay, because not every school decided to participate in that same, or parents may have driven them to school, but we provided the transportation based on providing equal access to that transportation.
Okay.
As we would on any other delay day.
Okay, and that's my understanding. My question for Mr. Bricker is, have we looked, what are other school districts doing in reference to a two-hour delay, or even an early dismissal?
On a normal, early dismissal, weather-related, they would do nothing different. And to my knowledge, the school districts that did the two-hour delay depended on the school and the district and what they decided, but typically, they did not provide transportation until two hours later.
That's it, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to go back to the comment that was made and raised about the planetarium. Dr. Zerby, can you just refresh us on the budget for the planetarium? Those funds are coming from where?
So, I'm going to estimate the amounts here, but let's say the renovation for the planetarium is about $1 million. Of that $1 million, $750,000 of that is coming from federal ESRS III funds, 53 and some odd change is coming from the Education Foundation, $100,000 is coming from the Department of Education as a grant, and there's maybe another, because about $200,000, Mr. Bricker, something like $200,000 that will come out of the district. So for an investment of a million-plus, the district is leveraging $200,000 of its own local resources to, you know, make this investment, you know, something spectacular for our student body for years to come.
And the district funds are committed funds, they're not in the budget, it's not a tax number or anything like that, it's previous surplus that we're spending rather than borrowing or using any other funds.
Good point, Mr. Bricker.
So if we didn't use those funds for this project, would they be available for normal budgeting purposes?
No, so, but if you recall, the original use of the $750,000 was destined for the improvements in the high school HVAC project. So we originally earmarked probably like $1.1 million for the HVAC project at the high school, but given the fact that we ran into those issues with scope and cost, and we put that on the back burner, we then pivoted to the other projects that we have available to us. We not only added some additional curriculum resources and specialists and other temporary staffing solutions, but we also made an investment here with the $750,000 into the planetarium.
Okay, thank you.
And it should be noted that regardless of what we do, we would have had to, if we were going to keep the planetarium, we would have had to replace the equipment, so we were looking probably in the neighborhood of $200,000. So if you think about the overall investment, we're spending a little bit more than $50,000 more to get a million-plus operation than just redoing the projector that was on its last leg.
Yes, Mr. Winters?
Just to answer a couple of finance questions that were floating out there, Mr. Bricker, can you explain the prior year adjustment of the $500,000 or $600,000 that was referenced but not explained?
Sure, the auditors in their review, as changing orders, they have different opinions than the other ones. They felt that the Peasers revenue that we received in December should go back to the prior year, that was typically beyond the three months, September, that's usually typically, we've typically done it for the other ones.
Mr. Bricker, is it, I'm sorry, is it Peasers or is it Social Security?
It's Peasers.
It's Peasers, okay.
And so they said to take that back in account for, it's only a one-time, it'll never be something that we do again, it's just because of the accounting change.
Thank you. Second question, Mr. or Dr. Zerby, I believe there was reference to budgetary item related to some aids for $450,000, I think was the dollar amount. I believe that the reason it's being taken out of the budget is that we were not able to hire the people with the proper certifications, so we're using outside services for those individuals. So they were needed for the educational delivery of the district, is that correct?
That is correct. What we're required to have is BCBA's, and the BCBA is a level of certification in schooling that just our normal aids that we hire through our normal process is not something we can find. So outside companies have a specialty in that area, they bring the folks in, they do the actual training, and they make themselves available to not only to Methacton, but to many school districts across the Commonwealth.
Okay. And then there was also a comment related towards not having a budget presentation. There is a budget presentation attached to the, well, it's attached on the website related to what we discussed briefly at the finance meeting the other day, so welcome anybody to it. It's a very brief update, and the reason it is a brief update and not brought towards the board is that there is some significant major educational delivery issues that need to be decided by Dr. Zerby and the administration around resources, any type of changes, any type of requirements. Again, we are taking the decisions based on educational first, and then seeing what fiscal impact that will have. So Dr. Zerby is working on that, and will, I believe, bring that in March and/or April, or both.
That's correct.
And in addition, the second, we had a significant increase in the Buxmont Consortium medical expense, so we're waiting for the second, and I believe either we've received it or are about to receive it, so that will have a major impact on the direction of the budget as well. So there's significant major changes, potential major changes, related to the budget that need to be ironed out, so any fine-tuning that Dr. Zerby and Mr. Bricker have done over the last month, would they continue to work on? And I think the learnings that we get from the previous year presentation that rightly so Mr. Bricker was complimented on, provide even more value on how to get a better budget for next year.
Any other comments from board members?
I just had one, actually, back to the planetarium. I think that earlier this month, the Mallon Planetarium had the honor of being a monthly stop of the Rittenhouse Astronomical Society, and so I just, I knew that, and I just looked up them. So they were founded in 1888, one of the oldest societies in the United States, and they do now mention the Methacton School District as being a site of one of their monthly events. And they go on to say, if you're interested in music with space themes, curious how someone goes from the classroom to working with the International Space Station, would you like to know what it's like to build a state-of-the-art telescope in the mountains of Chile? Attend an RAS event. So those are just some of the educational impacts that they cite to planetariums and their society. And if they left materials for us to look at, I would be interested, and maybe the board would be interested also in getting those.
Anyone else as we wrap up? All right, it's time for motion to adjourn. I see Mr. McGinnis, and I see Ms. Rocco, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.